Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's full council meeting on Monday, the 2nd of September. We have no fire drills planned this evening, but in the case of a fire alarm, please exit either through the door in which you come or the fire doors behind me. And next we have apologies for absence and
councillor Wenham and councillor Reynolds.
And councillor Jay Taylor, please. Many thanks. Next, we have declarations of interest. Does anyone have any declarations of interest in any of the matters below? Councillor Fraser. Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I'm a hundred per cent, but mine's coming in, not going out, so.
See, okay, you can stay. Thank you very much. Next, we have item four, which is public participation. Would any members of the public like to participate? Yes.
In the minutes, you start using codes for absence. Can you explain what the code means?
No, I think that's coded. Yeah. Unfortunately, we don't have our clerk here with us this evening. I think that would be an inquiry best placed for her. So if you could submit it by email, that'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Yes.
On that one, I did ask Sharon the question, and due to GDPR, it can't be answered because if one of the counts means that person's away, it's given away that that person's away and that house is empty.
Thank you. Thank you, Lesley. That's much appreciated. Anyone else, please? We'll move on. Thank you very much. Next, we have item five, first five A, which is the minutes of the town council meeting held on the 5th of August, 2024. Any amendments or can I please have a proposal and second of their acceptance? And councillor Bertram has that proposal submitted by councillor Dalton. And a show of hands, please.
One abstention.
Majority vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I wasn't present.
Okay, thank you.
You too.
And next, we have the minutes of the extraordinary meeting held on the 29th of July for acceptance and approval. Same principle, please. Councillor Bertram, seconded by councillor Thwaites, and a show of hands, please. And can we take it that that's all in attendance? That's fine. Thank you very much. Next, we have item six, which is events committee to consider reconvening the events committee and the council members.
Sure.
Thank you. To agree terms of reference and agree to set a budget for consideration and resolution. And for members that were present at the last environment committee meeting, I think it was. And due to the success of the open cinema, we discussed maybe a programme of summer events for next year. Unfortunately, Sharon isn't here this evening, but I had spoke to her and her man has just provided me an update with the budget and that would be that obviously it would be budgeted for next year when the three sec is doing set. But obviously plans could be underway. At that meeting, we did discuss having a working group, if that was a preference, rather than a committee, which obviously the terms of reference could be amended to reflect. But it was just whether or not councillors were supportive of this concept, please. Councillor Tyron.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with the principle. Just a quick question. Is this town council only that's? Because we got a bit of a muddle, if you recall last time, Bob. We don't want to portray the perception that the town council approved all the benefits of the voluntary groups and everything else. I mean, we're there to support them and help. But I think we just need to clear us to do what the role is in the tier terms of reference. So other groups don't start there. What you do. So that's, that's my only concern. And I'm sure there's an answer.
Their intention would not be to interfere in any other club group or organisation's events. They are entirely welcome to do as they please. We have no control over them. Apart from where obviously they're requesting to use our land. And actually, I think from the terms of reference that have been drafted, I think that actually the intention would be to actually welcome non-council members onto the working group or committee to engage and actually assist. Councillor Ashby.
Yeah, it's just a follow on to Councillor Tyron's point. I think it's about action as catalyst and a facilitator as opposed to a nana. And in partnership, particularly for example, the front fifteen, if they could do part of that as a, you know, the bonus and part of the work group, things like that. I think it's a great idea.
And can I just ask members, what would, what would your preference be? Would you prefer a formal committee where we would have our admin here taking, taking minutes and obviously agendas being published? Or would the preference be to have a more flexible working group that feeds into the council and the full council then ratify those decisions or take the proposals from the group? Councillor S. Taylor.
Well, actually, I think my preference would be for a working group because I think if we are inviting outside people's organisations and that to come in and work with us, that might be easier for them over a weekend, like on a Saturday afternoon or a Saturday morning. And I wouldn't want to put on our staff and drag them out over a weekend and come in and do it.
Yes.
But I just think it is less formal and engaging sometimes with members of the public. When it's less formal, it's less scary, it's less intimidating. But I'm happy to go with whatever members decide. But that's just my personal view.
Councillor Ashby.
I think that's a great last point. It can be quite intimidating if you're here in front of the public and you want to have a a forum that is open, is inviting, it's creative, inviting as it's supposed to be. But I'll also say there needs to be some of it, the first meeting, so they show the work that you do. Doesn't anything necessarily take up stuff that things.
Councillor Dale, we really need the working group because people can drop in and out. Because if somebody has a real interest inside the right, and the festival, the festival, they're really keen on that, but you probably need that. But they're not interested in doing the cinema. So, you know, people, you can get people from different genres. So, you know, I think the working group.
That's a really valid point. Councillor Tyron.
Yeah, again, I think the working group is more inviting and certainly shows we are just one part of the community. So if you can give that section, it gives that message. Question, sorry, more of a comment than a question. But so the question is, our working group will be reported to which committee? So if it's a town council event entirely, then obviously, but it's supporting that this, I'm just trying to work through now this tactically would work.
A working group would still feed into the full council. So if they were supporting an event and there was any finance required or anything like that, they would come and seek whatever, they would work out their own proposals to bring to us. But it would ultimately be for the council to look at the proposal, the event plan, whatever it was, and say, yes, we want to support this in this way.
I can give some more points, can I?
So I think there is around the table a consensus that a working group would be the preference. I think the terms of reference, if they were just amended slightly to reflect obviously a working group rather than a committee structure, would still, would still be of good terms of reference because there needs to be some level of mandate. Is there any councillors that would like to to be on this working group or would we like it to be free flowing? But actually, we all get notice of when there is a meeting and if it's something that takes our interest, we can attend.
I think that's quite good.
Councillor Tyron.
I think it's worth adding core number of councillors to continue to ensure continuous working rather than dropping in, dropping out to fly effectively. What happened at that meeting, well, there's no council there for whatever reason. So I think I would call the number of councillors that do attend. But if people on the outside have got any questions, you can say, go and see councillor. So I think it merits, but not to be seen as its councillors. They know.
Thank you.
You can see what I mean. But I'm just saying, the need to see to the identity of how we work. If that makes sense.
Um, yes. Is there any councillors, and I can imagine there might be a couple, that would like to be those four members? Councillor Bertram, councillor Tyron, councillor Fraser, councillor Dalton. Councillor Dale. One, two, three, four. That is five members. I'm happy with that. So those five four members, but obviously as and when the working party meets, all members would be invited to attend. That covers the appointment of members, the terms of reference and the budget, as I say, will be the figures that we worked into the budget for the next financial year. And Sharon will give us an update on that. Can I please have a proposal for that, that motion, please, which in summary is to start a events working group with five four members of councillor Dale, councillor Bertram, councillor Tyron, councillor Fraser, councillor Dalton, with a wider invitation being extended to all members. With the terms of reference that have been presented, amended to affect a working group rather than a committee. The proposal is then made by councillor Ashby. Can I have a second to that proposal, please? Councillor Dale, a show of hands, please. That is unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. Next, we have item seven, which is the grants policy to consider setting aside part of the grants funding to allow applications for rejuvenating high streets, shop frontages, consideration and resolution. Now, it was me that asked for this item to be brought to council. And really what I would like this evening is kind of just an in principle agreement from members, whether or not they're supportive. And I would like the finer detail to be deferred to the general practice and finance committee. So when the applications are made, should this proposal go through, the applications would go to GPNF for their approval. Today, we, well, we've got a grants budget of £60,000. Today, we've spent £13,000 of that, which leaves us £47,000 for the remainder of this financial year, which we're now coming up to halfway through. We've recently obviously had the town hall painted and decorated. And the reason I asked for this item really was because I thought, well, it would be nice if our high street shop fronts had the same advantage that we have, that we're privileged enough to have. And I think that from looking at the steering group minutes of the local plan meeting recently, obviously there was something there to maybe supporting local businesses and our high street. And I think to make it a attractive place would do that, which is why I put this forward. But happy to hear members' thoughts on that. Councillor Taylor.
I know Swatton have really supported their town centre recently, but they've worked with other organisations. And we've got historic England and the district and afterwards to rejuvenate their high street. I am not against it. But I'd rather a separate money set aside. I wouldn't want it to come out of wrong funds that we've just established and paid extra money into it. And I say that because there are clubs, groups and organisations that do come to us for money. And I know you're saying there's £47,000 left in that, but we don't know what's going to come in from now until May. I think it's a really good idea, but I'd just like a little bit more representation into it, maybe, like maybe contact Swatton's club and have a chat with them and see how they engaged with the other organisations to get that funding into their high street. Because it's not just about painting the shops. They've rejuvenated their market. They've like done, and I know we have a meeting with Megan this week to talk about wave finding and stuff, but they've done all of that for Swatton's high street and it seems to be paying off. Swatton is going from strength to strength at the moment. And I just, I'd like us to maybe jump on that bandwagon if we can.
Councillor Tyron.
Again, in principle, you know, this focus, the second bullet point was the terrible, so. And what was interesting about Swatton's boards, it the case that we're treating historic England. So they got huge amount of money because they made some good for the bodies. And I think as you said, I think we just need to carefully work through our budgets with doc and reaching, you know, doing up frontage can be quite expensive if you're into brickwork and everything else. So I think it's rather not to paint. So I've been principled, yes, but I think we need to work through them. I was just phoning the towns in Britain and just say, what do you do? Do you do this? How do you do it? And then, then thank you.
Councillor Dale, you know, that was the cycle. What you're suggesting is we do our project in shops. The planning. Is that what you're suggesting?
To put it bluntly. Yeah, pretty much. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we support local businesses, that we make our high street more attractive. And that we try, I think recently there's been a lot of criticism that the town council doesn't really support local businesses as much as we could or promote them as best as we could. And I think that really this is an opening, a way for us to be able to do that and to take a lead on it. I think recently, obviously, like I say, we've refurbished our front edge and I think it looks fantastic. And I just think it'd be nice, some of the shops in town, not, they may name's a point in, I mean, out, but I just think, you know, they're some do look a little bit tatty. And it would be nice that if, if they didn't, and if they had an opportunity to have some support to bring them to a standard. And that is what I'm suggesting. Also, I know that there's a heritage item as well within the neighbourhood plan review. And it could well be that actually where it is paintwork, we say, well, actually it has to be in a colour from approved list that's a heritage colour or conservation colour. I'm going to work on this way. Councillor Dalton. Councillor Tyron.
Again, totally agree with that. What I was going to suggest is, as I've got through this, let's say, feed the ability of powers work and what it would like. If it works talking to some groups that, you know, have been involved in retail of the town. So it's not just seeing or showing up again. It's working with the groups that are already set on the high street, like the retail. And just getting their ideas and what they think they need a lot better. So we just feed it all. And so, so then it's coordinated. And I'll contribute my own as well. So, sorry, just to the comments.
That's okay. Councillor Bertram, to check their handout.
Actually, I'd be a captain of land. That could be applied for by landlords or tenants.
I would say the landlord sent the businesses in the town centre.
For the application for a captain man into finances, which will get to finance for the group.
Yeah. So I think the principle would, I think Sharon actually did make a recommendation if this was to be accepted to allocate £5,000 from the 47 remaining. And her suggestion was that we kept it like, so the application was no greater than £500. So £500 per premises. And just to, just to help them hold. But if you feel like it needs, you know, a little bit more work, then I'm, I'm very happy. I'm not feeling precious about this. I'm very happy for it to be preferred. Councillor Dale, did you have your handout?
No.
Councillor Westby.
Well, I didn't, I think it's a bit, bit mean.
You think there should be more? Yeah.
But the other thing I was going to suggest more importantly is I think you're all too much funded. So it's not seen as a giveaway.
Yes.
So whatever people take that to contribute the same amount themselves.
Councillor Tyron.
Just, just for like, to put an example out there, I've just had a quote to do the front line. Mine's bricks, there's no paintwork, it's just the windows, the glossing. And that was in the region of £2,000 plus. So I'm just giving you an idea of how much it could cost for somebody to come in and paint some of these businesses, for these businesses to actually apply, apply what's costing them, looking at. For me, it was £2,000. And I actually asked the painter decorator that was out front here painting and decorating to come over and give me a quote because I was watching him do some woodwork and I have some woodwork that needs repairing. So I was like, oh, you'd have to give me a quote. And that was £2,000. So I'm just giving you a figure of what it could potentially cost some of the businesses to renovate, rejuvenate their premises.
Councillor Ashby.
Yeah, some of the queries I had been answered, it was particularly about the match fund. It's got, you've got, it's got to be match funded at the very least. And again, it needs to be captured as well. And you could potentially use this as a trial rather than say, you know, this is something we're going to do forever and a day and increase. In terms of the principle, I think brilliant. It's a great idea. Again, it's demonstrating that we're trying to help local businesses, we're putting our hands in a pocket. We just do need to be careful to manage the perception that there's favouritism from one business to a next when they're part of it.
Don't worry, I don't need a pocket.
But yeah, I think we just need to try. But the principle's great. We just need to be careful. It's got to be magical.
Okay.
That's not to say that it's not putting more.
Councillor Tyron.
Sorry, I promise this will be the last question straight from it. So I'm just just to give you an example, when I was at City Council, I was in charge of the industrial version improvement districts. So I had a budget of a million pounds. That was a different scale altogether, but that was to improve how close it is to retail and prison. That was crucial was it was 2% grant, but I have to match one of it. Wasn't necessarily cap because it might be. But hopefully, I think it's got to be match funded.
Yeah.
And also don't underestimate how much these things will cost soon, you know, particularly in the Gulf of Ireland.
And I think a sensible way around that is to say, as you say, match funded. And I think when I first approached Sharon about this and suggested to her, that is what I had suggested, was match funding. But I am not good with cap, so 50% up to the value of whatever that may be, whether £500 is too little, is a different matter. If I can just, because I think we're not going to maybe make a resolution on this this evening. I think if I can just summarise the points and the feelings of the council and please correct me if I'm wrong. And we can then ask our administration to look into this a little bit more. We would like a little bit of investigation, perhaps speaking to Swatton and some of the other market towns about initiatives like this and the way that's been undertaken in those. Some thought into, because I think if we could bring back a proposal that's, you know, been narrowed down a little bit, the preference would be match funding of 50% up to the value of a certain figure to be determined by our budgetary requirements. Whether or not that budget can come from allocation elsewhere. And I think we also need to give consideration to where exactly the scope of this is going to fall. Will it be the conservation area? Will it be the high street or the town centre? Exactly how we're going to map this and any conditions that we would think that we would apply. And also, I actually quite liked the suggestion that come from councillor Ashby about not having this as an open ended thing, but perhaps having something like a three month application period. So it's something that we're offering to more businesses. Applications need to be made within a certain timeframe. It's not something that's ongoing from the council. So with those points, and if I've missed any, please let me know if there's anything we'd like to add. But I think if we can go and have a little look at it on that basis and bring it back for resolution. Everyone happy with that? Thank you very much. And next we have financial matters to authorise payments for acceptance and approval. Councillor Fraser, if you'd like to step out for a moment.
What is, what was the chicken supplies and what is buzz supplies, chicken supplies? We had an allotment holder who unfortunately for whatever reason, he went after the chickens. And they were dazed without water or food. And Sharon came to the rescue. She bought them food and went down and fed them. And it was found, we'd now rehabbed them to somebody who was very caloured after them. So it was a mercy.
Yeah. Then really. And buzz supplies.
What was it on?
Buzz, the double C buzz supplies.
That was, that was new cut week of the town hall.
That was what? Sorry.
New capital.
Oh, okay, fine. No, that's fine. That's absolutely fine. Okay. Sorry.
Any other?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, it's new cut week. Yeah.
Nice call. Councillor Fox, seconded by five, councillor Tyron, and a show of hands, please. That's unanimous. And next we have item eight B to agree direct debits for acceptance and approval. Proposal and second, please, or queries. Councillor Thwaites, seconded by councillor Dale, and a show of hands. That is majority vote. Next, we have to no, councillor Fraser didn't. Councillor Fraser, are you in favour of direct debits? Yes. Oh, that's unanimous then. Thank you very much, Anne. And I said Anne, did I not? Oh, I said Anne. I definitely said Anne. Item eight C to receive income for acceptance and approval. Can I please have a proposal and second, eh? Councillor Bertram, seconded by councillor Wingfield, and a show of hands, please. That's everyone with an abstention from councillor Dale.
Yeah, I've got the up there.
Yeah. And can we minute the abstention as well, please, Anne?
Yeah.
Pay cash is for information. Does anyone have any queries?
There wasn't any pay cash.
Well done, Anne.
Yeah.
Item E is income expenditure. That's for information only. Does anyone have any queries? And F is the completion of the audit 2023, 2024. The external audit is report for acceptance and approval. Can I please have a proposal and second, eh, or any comments, please? Councillor Dale, seconded by councillor Tyron, and a show of hands, please. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Next, we have eight G, which is the town hall kitchen quotations for acceptance and approval. This has been rattling on for a while now. And a recommendation was due to be put forward at the last GPNF committee meeting. But there was not a item worded appropriately on the agenda, just through a typing error. So we felt it better to defer. The recommendation was anyone who feels free to step in, insist me. Do you know which one was the one recommended for prisons?
I'd be ahead.
Recommendation. Councillor Taylor.
Yeah, the one, yeah.
I'm looking to you, councillor Bertram, you go to one of them.
Will we come out and remember the huge, huge quake? I'm scrolling through, huge quake. Which and for the around £2,000, £5,000.
Yeah.
£300. I don't know if this one does have, there was a slot, maybe the member that just looked forward and I don't know if that's any of us. That is a company we would like to own. A relatively local, local.
Okay. And the amendment was
it was two hops, one set of rings instead of a cross form. And two micros, I don't think the micros are on this.
Basically a picture of each other.
Yeah.
Okay. But it's not.
I don't know if that's any of us. But that's for this top, if we just have a proposal that this is the company that we would like to work, I think the GPNF committee would be happy with that. And the clerk, we will now have those couple of extra things.
And was it purchasing this lady that has the contractor that undertook the work, um, to the doors and to undertake?
Yeah, I think this company's doing that supply.
Again, the same contractor that basically used for the fit.
Yeah.
Okay. And councillor Estella, would you like to make that proposal?
Um, I think everyone else is with the space that we use Hughes Gray. Oh, it's councillor.
Okay, completely. I'm just going to, I'll put forward, um, um, I made a bit to a proposing for my.
I've got, I've got nothing to keep my heart out.
Well, the, the quotation for this councillor, Ashley's just put it out, where this was supposed to go, um, to GPNF some time ago. It does say that the quote was valid until the thirty first of May twenty four. So can we make the proposal on the basis that they're only giving the quote that was provided?
Yeah, this quote's going to change slightly because we passed for an extra half. So I just, if we can just the figures quoted in the whole plus, plus the extra in addition of pieces that.
The hob and the.
Were required.
Micro wave.
Well, I don't think he's, I don't know if the micros come in something, but the hob definitely is. So it's just for the amendments that members put forward.
Okay. And that's a proposal from councillor Taylor, second by councillor Bircham and a plan of share hands, please. I think we'll be pleased to see this pass. Yeah, I'm actually unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, next we have item eight H, which is the replacement of a mid fire line system in town hall. Uh, and the quotation is for acceptance and approval. Um, there is one quote impact for this, um, because the contractor is already undertaking works for us. So it's in addition to the works being undertaken. Um, can I please have a proposal on second there for the additional works? Councillor Taylor, second by councillor Fraser. A show of hands, please. That's the trophy, right? Oh, not unanimous. It's unanimous.
Sorry, I was.
Uh. Next. No, no, no. It's, it's, it's unanimous. Uh, next we have councillors' reports. Would any councillors wish to make reports? Uh, yeah, I'd be very pleased to go first. So, um, chairman's report, I had the absolute privilege this month. Uh, two or this month, last month, uh, to attend the relaunch of the Little Hair Shop on the twelfth. Uh, the grand opening of Turner's Occupational Health on the fifteenth, which I must say uh, was very, very impressive. And I would encourage anyone to go in and have a little look around. They've done a wonderful job. And also, um, to declare the Woodfest open yesterday. Uh, another just jaw droppingly brilliant event, uh, from the Fun Fest team. Uh, that was wonderful. Uh, we did have a councillor surgery, uh, in the town hall on Saturday morning, um, and it was quite slow, um, not too many members of the public present, but it was a really nice opportunity uh, for councillors to, to network. Um, I think everyone, uh, did enjoy their, their time here. And the next date was set for the twenty sixth of October, Saturday, the twenty sixth of October. And that is all from me in my capacity as chairman. I'll go to other members now, please. Uh, councillor S Taylor.
Um, August is normally a bit quiet, so it has been not much really going on at district level. Um, I also attended a business opening at the end of September, those, um, comments. It's actually quite surprising how different it is inside. If you've used nuts and bolts to then open now, it's like, oh my god, where did this phone come from? So that was really good. And the stuff that they're offering is, is exceptional as well, services. Um, I was out a couple of weeks ago with residents on Mill Lane with councillors Payron Fraser, but also in our capacities, they're helping out, letting drop and planning out, um, their flood lines group can get itself up and running. Also attended a multi-agency flood meeting at the town hall last weekend, um, with the rock area owners. And again, there were other councillors present and that was really good, like how all of those rock area owners are coming together and how, how as a, as a district, as a county and as a town, we've all gathered together and, and funded that. And I think by the time we're finished, it was muted. It's going to be over a hundred thousand pounds that's coming in to try and mitigate and, and help these residents in the future, which I think is amazing. Um, we've had a fancy surgery, I attended, and I've attended smacking also.
Which again, had a very good attendance of, um, town councillors. So thank you all very much for that. Is there anything that anyone else would like to report? Okay. Uh, moving on, we have the clerk's report. Sharon isn't with us to deliver it this evening, um, but we were sent it um, by email. Will that be uploaded with the meeting papers? It is, but it is fabulous. Thank you very much. A very interesting read, um, if anyone would like to take a look. Um, next we have the book sale arrangements. Um, so many, many moons ago. Um, we did agree the next dates, which were, um, the tenth of October for setup and then the book sales run across the eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth. Um, a schedule for volunteers will be being put together, but do we have any takers present?
Helps them force them to help join the, in play.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Quay. Any other members want to put their heads up? Uh, so it's the tenth for setup and then the eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth of October.
Oh, they all leave. I can't tell them yet that, of licensing, which I was. Councillor Fraser is in as well. Never been offered that. You've probably just not confirmed it yet.
Okay, so I'll just have a show of hands over, over those three boardrooms. Just.
Yeah.
There we go. So we've got a commitment from, keep your hands up so I can get it for the minutes. And we've got a commitment to help from councillor Dalton, councillor Fraser, councillor Tyler, councillor Quay. Is it everyone? It's everyone. Everyone's prepared to help. Thank you, everyone. Four times. Brilliant team effort. Um, next we have item twelve, which is the Royal British Legion, application to use Queen's five for operation market garden. Um, actually we've seen from the correspondents, um, we had previously given petition to another individual. They have withdrawn, um, due to unforeseen circumstances. They're no longer able to do that. Um, and, and the legion now will be seeing that some of the way home instead. Um, can I have a proposal to accept this, please? Councillor Estola, second by councillor E Tyler and a show of hands, please.
I'm saying, I'm going to declare an interest, declare an interest.
Yeah, just, just personal trust, but yeah.
Yes, I'm sure.
So that's an abstention from councillor Dale, but otherwise all in favour. Do you want to go? There we go. Councillor Dale's vote in its cavity. That's, that's unanimous as well. Brilliant. In the same direction.
No, I can vote apparently.
Well. You have no game, do you?
Yeah, I just scribbled that out. I keep scribbling that out of fear.
Sorry, Anne. Sorry, sorry. Uh, moving on, we've got the next public participation, item thirteen. Uh, would any members of the public like to participate? They're just spectating this evening. Okay, moving on, we've got item fourteen. That's items for the next agenda. Um, I think the only item that we're carrying forward, um, is the item seven, which was the, um, the grants funding, um, but I think we should leave that to be confirmed. I think we don't want to rush it. However long it takes yourself and, and Sharon and the team to get the information and do the research. So um, we'll leave that to you. Um, does anyone else have any items they wish to raise now? If not, you can spend them at any time by your mouth. Okay, perfect. Next is item fifteen to exclude the present public, to pass a resolution excluding the present public from the meeting, given the necessity of nature of business to be discussed. I've got a proposal from councillor Quay, second of course councillor Suzanne, a show of hands. That's unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone, for attending this evening.